To order the Tuesday, November 1st, 2016 meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow your head in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to file with United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate your being here. At the pre-agenda meeting, there were no adjustments to the agenda except for, under an item of new business, Commissioner Johnson will have some remarks. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no presentations this evening, and there are no appointments for the board, that I'm aware of. We do have two public hearings. One is to consider a request from Ron Johnson to rezone 48.9 acres from residential agricultural conditional use to general business. And Mr. Matthew Todd, if you could please summarize for commissioners and the public.
Good evening to the board. The first request tonight we have before us is outlined in blue on the screen. It's currently R-A-C-U-D. The property to the west, the GB, was rezoned last year. Staff does support this request. It's consistent with the 2030 Horizon Plan because the plan calls for employment center, industrial flex. The lot is adjacent to commercially and industrial zone property. Traffic impact should not exceed capacity. Planning Board did recommend approval eight to zero. It's a map showing the future land use plan. The property is sandwiched in essentially between two different industrial parks. An arrow image looking at the property. A picture, now an arrow image looking at the property, and you can see the adjacent industrial parks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Are there any questions from commissioners, from Mr. Todd? Hearing none. Open this public hearing. And we have one person signed up, Mr. Jimmy McKnight. If you could please just announce your name for the record and your address.
Jimmy McKnight, 255 Rolling Hills Road in Mooresville. And I run and own real co-investment properties. I represent the sellers. Would favor your support in this and here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. McKnight? We all felt it was a pretty straightforward request.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing or hearing none, close this public hearing. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the zoning map amendment and to make the findings that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 plan and that the said approval is reasonable and in the public's best interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it's adjacent to commercially and industrial zone property and the traffic impact seems to not exceed the capacity, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further comment or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.2. This is a public hearing to consider a request by Christie and Gaddis Pepper Jr. and Lori and Brian Holley. Once again, Mr. Todd, if you'll please summarize.
This request centers around the two properties outlined in blue. You can see the area in white is actually county zoning jurisdiction while the crosshatch area is Troutman zoning jurisdiction. And the request is to release the back portion of both of these lots, just over six acres, to the town of Troutman. The owner's trying to market the property, I believe, and it's going to make it easier to market it with it having one zoning, one consistent zoning jurisdiction. That's an arrow of the property. The access is on that subdivision road. And just a land use map showing the county's got it identified as low-density residential. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd on this matter? Hearing none. Go ahead and open this public hearing. There is no one signed up to be heard, so I will canvas those in attendance if there is anyone that would like to be heard in this matter. Seeing or hearing none, close this public hearing. Is there a motion in this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the request for release of Johnstone subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Troutman by Christie and Gaddis Pepper Jr. and Lori and Brian Holley.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Moving on to administrative matters that were appropriate for consent agenda that were reviewed at the pre-agenda meeting. I would ask Mr. Smith if he would please summarize, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one is a request from the Health Department to write off their uncollected patient accounts' debt in the amount of $17,976.49. Item two is a request from the Planning Division to call for a public hearing on November 15th regarding proposed text amendments to the Land Development Code. Item three, requests for approval by Finance of an authorizing resolution to apply for $130,000 North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant. Item four is a request from Partners Behavioral Healthcare to use $325,000 of their fund balance for facility improvements. Item five is a request from the Clerk to the Board to approve the minutes from October 18th, 2016. And the Board took Item 11.1 under unfinished business, which is a request from Administration to continue the discussion on the Golden Leaf Community-Based Grants Making Initiative. Put it on consent with the following changes. Four projects were submitted for Golden Leaf Letters of Intent. Those approved were one for Friends of Fort Dobbs for $440,000. A second for Iredale-Statesville Schools and Mitchell Community College for $460,000. This relates to the North Iredale High School Agricultural and Early College Program. And the final item was from the Mooresville-South Iredale EDC for Phase 1B of the Mooresville Business Park East, and that was for $600,000.
As we noted, these were all matters on our consent agenda prior to asking for a motion for their approval. I would like to give a shout out to the Health Department for their increase in effectiveness in their collection rate. The $17,000 or close to $18,000 being written off as uncollectible is a significant reduction from years past. Last year, at this time, it was in excess of $30,000. And in years previous to that, it had been in excess of $60,000. So, and I believe as well that the Medicaid write-offs have been reduced to virtually zero. So, that's just a tremendous effort and kudos to the Health Department staff for working that collection process. Are there any other comments relative to any of these other administrative matters? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. This evening, we do not have any announcements for any vacancies on boards or commissions, nor do we have any appointments. We do have an item under new business, and I would turn the floor over to Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. I want to share a few thoughts with you. This is my next, last regular board meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I want to talk about economic development, if a little wood, and I want to offer you those who will remain and those who will join this Board some words of encouragement. And perhaps they can learn from some of the things I've done right and some of the things I've done wrong, and I think, I hope at the conclusion you'll consider it to be beneficial. Mr. Chairman, I applaud the city of Statesville in funding a retail development staff person at Chamber of Commerce. Statesville residents are often heard saying they wish they had this restaurant, that clothier, or that electronics retailer. All of these would do much to improve the quality of life and add revenues to local coffers. We must recognize, however, the way retailers make decisions on where to locate. They have in place a matrix which is formula-based. To be considered a local community must have a sufficient population and an adequate per-capita income. Retailers already know that X number of people with a per-capita income of Y will yield a market of Z. They know that in that market, the amount of money spent on their offering of goods. They know that their marketing program will capture a certain percentage of that market. From there, it is simple arithmetic. If your community fits their formula, they know they can operate profitably, and they count. If your community does not meet their formula, they do not come. They will not come regardless of how much you actively recruit them. Retail recruitment deals with the supply side of the equation. To be successful in developing our economy, we must also deal with the demand side. To improve the possibility of retailers locating here, we must address this demand side. We must increase the market size and the per-capita income in our local market. Why must we do this, and how do we do this? One reason we must is an economy is never standing still. It is either growing or shrinking. We must keep young talent here. The population of the 20s and 30-year-olds somethings decreased in Statesville since the last census. This is not meant as a criticism, just a statement of fact. No doubt, many smart, talented young people decided to stay, but too many decided to leave. At a minimum, more decided to leave than to stay and come. These people will hit their peak earning years in the next 10 to 20 years. Too many will do it somewhere else. That's not good for Statesville. It's not good for Iredale County. Secondly, while receiving a AAA rating from Fitch and an inviable rating from other rating agencies, we get deemed for the disparity of income between the northern and southern parts of the county. That's why we should do it. Now how? We know there's a shortage of sites in the Charlotte area that are ready for industrial client location. We can and must seize and exploit this opportunity by having sites ready for occupancy. I beg your indulgence. I've been preaching this sermon for years. That means it must be zoned properly, water, sewer, phase one environmental, gas if needed, electrical service, fiber, ingress and egress. About four and a half years ago, we hired a consultant to assess our area and recommend sites best suited for development. We worked to pass legislation for deferment of taxes on rezoned property until it was sold. At the same time, I approached Mr. Smith and asked him to recommend money in our budget for industrial site development, which he did, and this Board approved. But little has happened. The hiring of Russ Rogerson as economic developer is among the best decisions in my tenure. His character is beyond question. His knowledge and experience are rarely equaled. We should work with him on recommendations and act on those recommendations. If we have an inventory of client-ready sites, we will succeed in locating industries here with good-paying jobs. This will keep and attract young talent. Per-capita income will increase. Our market size will grow. This will increase the likelihood that your favorite retailer will pick Statesville. My experience in business has taught me that the best deals happen when one hand washes the other. A two-pronged approach on the supply side, one on the supply side, which is retail recruitment, and the other on the demand side, which is industrial recruitment accompanied by a client-ready inventory of sites, does just that. One helps the other. One hand washes the other. Many years ago, while studying business ethics, I learned of moral hazard. Anyone who assumes a position of authority inherently assumes a moral hazard. I encourage those who remain and those who will follow me to accept this hazard. I challenge them to display a type of character that few are even given the opportunity to exhibit. Use your position to bless the lives of people you will never know and will never know you did it. Do it, and your life will be immeasurably blessed. Do it, and great will be your reward. I encourage you to take these words as they are intended and continue to work to develop inventory for Statesville and all of Iredale County and grow this economy. It's a good place to live, and we need to exploit it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and we will have ready access to your words of wisdom based on the good recording of our minutes by our faithful clerk. And so we will have them for our continual refreshment for many years to come.
They are.
They are durable comments that are applicable for many years to come.
I have a collection of writings that are available in CDs, Mr. Chairman. If you just dial 1-800-CATDADDY, they're available online. Thank you.
Is it on Amazon?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And any further comments? Moving on to the County Manager's Report. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to hand out a flyer. That is a rough draft flyer, but leads into what I'm going to be talking about a little bit. This is going to be handed out at some point soon. We're going to work to refine this, but it's basically, right now, this is staff's attempt at a wayfinding process around the courthouse and for county facilities in the justice block, I'll call it. The part of our new parking arrangement is now in place. We did some restriping outside of the Hall of Justice Annex, and there's some reserved parking for staff and judges and those working at the courthouse. That's kind of step number one. That has taken place, and that's, I guess, the first step in this whole, all of the changes that are going to be starting with the construction of the jail. But this is, this flyer is basically just an example of how we're going to try and help the public navigate, you know, around. What you see on the front is basically a rough draft of our signage that we're going to have. We're going to try and keep it consistent so people know where it is that they need to be parking and try and direct them in that, in those directions. So, that has started. We'll continue to refine this, but I wanted to make sure you got at least a draft of it now. Along those same lines, Probations has officially moved into their new digs on Meeting Street. Thank you for that building, and they've been very appreciative. They are now out of the Davie Avenue building, and that will be at some point soon, along with the Harrell Street White House coming down, because we've got to get those down before we can put the fencing up for the jail and actually can begin the construction there. And now, totally changing gears, I've got one other handout. This is a, I'll let it circulate. This is the final report of the 2016 limited obligation refunding bonds that we've been dealing with for the last several months. Susan put this together, and without going through the entire spreadsheet, I will point you to the last line that is in green, which is the cash flow savings over the next, basically, 12 years of $10.3 million. And that, just wanted to make sure you got a copy of what was done in the final report, and I would like to thank Susan for all of her hard work and in finance as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Just so everyone knows, I mean, that's almost a million dollars a year that will be freed up for capital expenses for the two-school system, or all the school systems, excuse me. So, I mean, that's a big benefit, and it's a big benefit right now, so fantastic. Thank you.
Well, I think that kudos is deserved by our entire finance staff, particularly Susan Robertson, for bird-dogging this. Nobody watches this bottom line and opportunities more faithfully and zealously than she does. The, in my view, the success of this refinancing is in large measure due to the prudent policies adopted by this Board over the last several years, which has weathered a recession and built up a fund balance. And the prudent expenditures and the financing of debt where needed has resulted in, you know, recognition, as Commissioner Robertson alluded to, the AAA designation by at least one of the rating agencies and very high-rating agency, similar ratings by the other two rating agencies. And so that comes from a lot of hard work and a lot of, all the entire staff and the commissioners all working together to squeeze out every ounce of savings while delivering the services that county residents need and desire. So, I'd just like to officially give a round of applause for our finance staff members. Anything further on the agenda? We have two items in the closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn in closed session to deal with a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A6, as well as property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A5. Is there a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to move to closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are set.[1440.82] We have two items in the closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn in closed session to deal with a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A6, as well as property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A5. Is there a motion?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to move to closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to like sign, motion carries unanimously. We are in session. Now, the two of you look like the old 60 Minutes. Point counterpoint.
Oh, yes. Trivia. What was their names?
Anne.
Anne?
I was talking FYI.
Nope. Kilpatrick? Or Kirkpatrick? Only on point counterpoint.
And what everybody remembers is the Saturday Night Live version of this. Oops, sorry.
We will resume our open session. No items from the closed session to report for any decision. At this time, anything further come before the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign.
You come live with that one, you should do.